The other one was 12B.
Yeah, and I think we know the number we're supposed to call for.
Okay, it is one o'clock, Tuesday, October 15th. Time for our regularly scheduled meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, it is Commissioner Landgraf to do the pledge and invocation. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day that you have provided us. We ask that you continue to watch over and guide our community, especially our first responders, Lord. Also, Lord, we ask that you watch over and view those who have been impacted by the recent hurricanes. In your name we pray, amen.
Okay, next item is the approval of the minutes from the last regular meeting, which if no corrections are offered, shall stand approved.
Continuing.
Seeing none, this will stand approved. Next is our public comment, which if anyone in the room has anything to state other than what's on the agenda today, they're welcome to come up to the mic. Please state your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, 6A.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Beth Koksel, Livewell Finney County Health Coalition to allow the mayor to proclaim the week of October 23rd through 31st, 2024, as Red Ribbon Week in Garden City, Kansas.
Mayor, I make the motion we approve the proclamation as presented.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
And Beth's in attendance. Beth, did you want to come up and say a few words about Red Ribbon Week?
Sure. So, good afternoon, I am Beth Koksel. Thank you guys for allowing us to join you here today as we prepare to kick off Red Ribbon Week, an important time to come together as a community to stand against substance use. This week is about raising awareness and empowering our youth to make healthy drug-free choices. I'm especially proud to share that youth from the Garden City High School Resist Group will be visiting several USD 457 schools this summer to give presentations. These students are passionate about making a difference in their efforts to de-normalize tobacco use and promote healthy living are inspiring. As adults, our focus this month is on encouraging parents of 10th and 12th grade students to complete the necessary forms so that their children can participate in the Kansas Communities That Care Survey. This confidential survey provides critical data that helps us shape programs aimed at reducing youth substance use in our community and across Kansas. Additionally, I'd like to remind everyone that our Drug Free Communities Coalition Group meets monthly on the last Monday of each month at noon at St. Catherine Hospital, and all are welcome to join us. Together, we can make a lasting impact. Lastly, a special thank you to the members of our Drug Free Communities Work Group, our Livewell Board, and the Garden City Resist Group who are here with us today. Your dedication and hard work are key to creating a healthier, drug-free future for our youth. Thank you, and several of our Resist kids are here, and they have red ribbons for everybody to wear during Red Ribbon Week as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And did you want to take a picture with them? Do you want to read the proclamation first?
Yeah, well, let me read the proclamation and then we'll get a picture, so. All right, so. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse continue to be a major public health and safety concern in Garden City, Kansas, and whereas it is imperative that community leaders, parents, teachers, and all citizens of Garden City unite to address this problem associated with substance use and promote a healthy, drug-free lifestyle for all our youth. And whereas Red Ribbon Week is the nation's largest and longest-running drug use prevention campaign, celebrated annually from October 23rd through October 31st, and serves as a reminder of the importance of drug prevention efforts. And whereas all residents of Garden City are encouraged to demonstrate their commitment to a drug-free community by participating in prevention activities, programs, and educational events that promote the message of living drug-free and alcohol-free. And whereas Garden City community members, in partnership with local schools, law enforcement, businesses, and other organizations, play a critical role in preventing drug use and supporting efforts that will eliminate the demand for illegal drugs, alcohol, and tobacco among our youth. And whereas the efforts of the Livewell Finney County Health Coalition, Resist Chapter, and other local agencies have been instrumental in promoting drug-free living and providing resources for individuals and families struggling with substance use. Now, therefore, I, Manny Ortiz, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim the week of October 23rd through the 31st of 2024 as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Garden City, and encourage all citizens to participate in the efforts to promote prevention, to promote prevention, raise awareness, and work together to build a safer, healthier, and drug-free community. Sign and seal this 15th day of October.
Thank you all. Mayor and Commissioners, item 7A. We are excited to celebrate Bob Zunt in his having recently received at the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference recognition for his 40 years of service. And the league recognizes certain milestone, but reserves kind of in-person recognition and for folks with 40 years or greater service. And so, we're excited that we had a City of Garden City employee achieve that milestone. It's a pretty rare feat in the state of Kansas. And so, we'd like Bob to come up. He's joined today, I believe.
By his wife.
No? Just Bob.
All right. And so, Saturday morning, it was a pleasure to join Bob and his wife and Mike Muirhead at the League of Kansas Municipalities Awards Bank Breakfast. And we got to celebrate him, but even better, we get to celebrate him today. So, we'll all join him up here. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Item 7B. We'd like to recognize and thank the 2023 through 2024 Echelon Front facilitators for their continued dedication and work to provide monthly leadership training to all city employees. So, in June of 2022, our entire organization participated in an Echelon Front training that challenged our staff to think about ourselves, our immediate work groups, our relationships across the organization, and our relationships with our community partners. It highlighted skills and principles that we all have the ability to grow and use, both professionally and personally. After the training, the city wanted to further incorporate those principles, which the kind of four pillars are cover and move, simple, prioritize and execute, and decentralized command. In a more robust training program, beginning in March 2023, every employee was assigned to a group that met once a month to dive into these principles in more detail. These meetings were facilitated by city staff members and helped build relationships across departments that have led to improved communication, stronger relationships throughout our organization at all levels. None of this would have been possible without our facilitators and active participation from the entire staff. We celebrated the conclusion of this phase of training in September and wanted to highlight the work of all of our facilitators throughout this program and thank them for their work and dedication throughout the last year and a half. Our facilitators for this training were Alice Nelson, Ceylan Hurtado, Chance V. Hill, Claudia Valencia, Clay Payne, Courtney Pruitt, Jose Sejas, Julio Saldana, Mary Ella Gray, Nolan Till, Robert Ojeda, Robert Tomlin, Stephanie Camarena, and Tyler Patterson. We'd like to thank them. And if you're in attendance today, would you come into the room and we can recognize you appropriately? Items 7C through 7F for all staff reports. If you have any questions on those, we'd be glad to try to answer them. Move on to meetings of note, those requiring RSVPs. If you'd please do so through the city clerk's office, we'd appreciate it. I think we're ready for item nine, the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2573-2024A.
Mayor, I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2573-2024A.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Mayor and Commissioners, I need to call in for this next item.
Okay.
Bear with me.
Hello, Mary.
Hi, Mary. This is Matt Allen. We're in a City of Garden City City Commission meeting right now. Getting ready for the agenda items related to the city's bond issue. So, I'll start those now. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, Mayor Commissioners and our viewing audience, this is Mary Carson, the city's bond counsel with Triplet Wolf Garrettson. All right, item 10A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the following ordinance regarding the city's taxable general obligation bonds, Series A, 2024. And if approved, it would be ordinance number 2994-2024. Jared.
Good afternoon. At the September 17th, 2024 city commission meeting, the governing body authorized the 2024 general obligation issue for the following projects: a 1 million gallon water storage tower, engineering and re-drilling of two water wells, and the construction of an extraneous flow basin at the wastewater treatment plant. Financial advisor Brett Shogren will present the results of the bids received today on October 15th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. to the governing body. Mr. Shogren will also discuss the city's credit rating prepared by Moody's Investor Service. I'll turn it over to him.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Brett Shogren was Steeple Public Finance in Wichita, financial advisor of the city. As Jared indicated, we held a bond sale this morning. We developed the preliminary official statement, excuse me, and submitted it along with your most recent audits and other information about the city to Moody's Investor Service to solicit an underlying credit rating. The rating agency reaffirmed your AA3 rating, citing the city's economic expansion in recent years being the economic center for its largely agricultural surroundings, your trend of maintaining operating reserves and liquidity ratios in excess of 35%, coupled with manageable long-term liabilities and fixed costs. We applied this AA3 rating and sent the bid package to a list of potential underwriters, banks, and bidders. And we advertised the sale on the Kansas Register as well as your local newspaper. The issue was also approved for municipal bond insurance if bidders opted to use it. This morning at 10:00 a.m., we opened the Parity website, which is where we collect the bids. And we received seven bids on the bonds. I passed around a bid tab with the results. I won't go through all of them, but the best bid was provided by Piper Sandler and Company on the 20-year bonds at a true interest cost of 3.701466%. Similar to last year, the bonds were bid at a premium, which means the underwriter paid more than face value for slightly higher coupons for cash flow purposes. Using the premium, which was approximately $215,000, we were able to downsize the issue from $8,500,000 down to $7,795,000 to offset the higher coupons, and still were able to fully fund the water projects as well as pay all costs. The original payment estimates that Jared budgeted for were approximately $608,000 per year at an estimated interest rate of four and a quarter. The sale resulted in a true interest cost of 3.7%, and that resulted in an average payment of $572,813 per year, saving the city and its taxpayers over $735,000 over the life of the bonds. The bonds are callable in November of 2031 and can be refinanced at that point in time. If rates were to drop, we will keep an eye on all of your bonds, including this issue, for interest cost savings opportunities. There are two action items for consideration today related to the bond sale. Number one is passage of the bond ordinance, which authorizes the issuance of the bonds and the tax levy to make the payments on the bonds. And then, the bond resolution, which directs the sale and delivery of the bonds authorized by the ordinance. These items have been drafted and revised by your bond counsel, Mary Carson of Triplet Wolf and Garrettson, who's on the phone to answer any legal questions. And this puts things in motion to issue the bonds and set them up for closing. With approval of the bond ordinance and resolution, we'll order the bonds printed. We'll submit the transcript to the Attorney General's Office for approval. And the issue is scheduled to close on November 13th, which is when you'll have money for your projects. I'd be happy to stand for any questions you may have about the sale or Mary Carson's on the line for legal questions.
Seven's quite a few organizations bidding. I mean, I know we've had less than that, but.
Yeah.
I mean, when I looked at it, it was.
Yeah, the city, Garden City's been a popular bidder or a popular issuer with our bidders with previous issues. There's a lot of our clients that are smaller, that get, you know, three and four bids. Garden City typically gets between seven and sometimes 10 or 11. So, this is a good result.
Yeah.
Brett, a question for you and I think for Jared. Whether it was your forecasting or Jared's inclusion of this issuance in our budget projections, how did these rates fare with respect to our projections a few months ago?
The original projection was four and a quarter. That was, I think we probably estimated that in August, July or August. Between then, we've had the Fed cut interest rates by 50 basis points. And I think that was proved to kind of be built into the market. The market anticipated that. So, we did capture some of that savings there. But there was also some other meetings with employment numbers and things that could affect the marketplace as well. But last week before we took bids, I thought we'd come in about 375. Came in right there, a little bit less than that. So, had a positive result.
Yeah.
And all the bids, we received seven bids. All of the bids were within about 13 basis points of each other. So, they were really competitive bids, and everybody really sharpened their pencil and submitted.
Very good. Mary, did you have anything you want to add?
No, I was just here to answer questions. You've got all the information.
Have any other questions?
I'll just be pointing out, for next year's budget, we anticipated, as Brett said, that $608,000. So, it's about $35,000 less for next year's budget than what we anticipated. So, we'll see that cost savings when we do the revised budget in 2025. With that, the alternatives for the governing body for this item are that they may accept the low bid and adopt the ordinance, or the governing body may reject the bids and defer action to a later date. Staff's recommendation is that the governing body accept the low bid and adopt the ordinance. And as a fiscal note, these payments are coming out of the water funds debt.
Mayor, I make the motion we approve ordinance number 2994-2024.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item 10B is step two of the process Jared and Brett described to you. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the following resolution regarding the city's general obligation bond, Series A, 2024. And if approved, it would be resolution number 3135-2024.
The city has adopted ordinance number 2994-2024, authorizing the issuance of the city's general obligation bond, Series A, 2024, for the purpose of providing funds to pay for the costs of the improvements described and defined in the bond ordinance. The bond ordinance provides that this resolution be adopted by the governing body of the city to set forth details and conditions and to make covenants with respect to the bonds. The alternatives for you today are that the governing body may adopt the resolution or the governing body may defer to a later date. Staff recommends the governing body adopt the resolution and the fiscal note.
Mayor, move we approve resolution number 3135-2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Jared. Thank you, Brett. And thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Goodbye. Mayor, before we go on to 10C, if you'll allow me to jump back to report of the city manager, I would like to add kind of to that list of things following 7A. At the League of Kansas Municipalities meeting, Commissioner Roy Cessna filled in on kind of emergency notice as the emcee of events. It's a role typically played by the president of the League of Kansas Municipalities, but the president was out of commission unexpectedly for medical reasons. And Roy was able to step in and fill that and did a great job. So, congratulations to him also. He is currently vice chair of the League of Kansas Municipalities, and they approved the officer slate for 2025. And so, beginning in January, he'll become the Kansas League of Municipalities president of the board. And so, we'll appropriately recognize and celebrate that when January rolls around, but wanted to give everybody a heads up and congratulate him here. That's a big deal for Garden City. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Back to item 10C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from GC, General Commercial, to C2, General Commercial, for the property generally located at 3208 East Mary Street. And if approved, this would be ordinance number 2995-2024.
Good afternoon.
John.
O'Reilly Auto Enterprises is requesting to rezone the property generally located at 3208 East Mary Street from GC, General Commercial District, which is a county zoning, to C2, General Commercial District, which is a city zoning. The property contains 0.88 acres and is currently vacant. The property was recently annexed into the city limits, and the final plan was approved by the governing body on August 6th of 2024. The property owner intends to develop this property for a new auto supply store. The proposed land use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The current comprehensive plan and future land use has this property categorized as commercial potential. C2, General Commercial District will be the most appropriate zoning district for an auto supply store as they are a permitted use within this zoning district. Rezoning the property will not affect any of the surrounding properties. The governing body may make its recommendation and state their findings according to the criteria in section 27.040 listed in the staff report, items A through I. The planning commission recommended approval of the proposed amendment at the September 19th, 2024 meeting by a unanimous vote. There are three alternatives before you today. One, the governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Two, the governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. And three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends the governing body adopt the planning commission's recommendation and approve the proposed ordinance. And there's no fiscal impact.
Mayor, move we approve ordinance number 2995-2024.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10D. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from I3 Heavy Industrial to G2, General Commercial, for the property generally located at 804 East Fulton Street. And if approved, this would be ordinance number 2996-2024. Dante.
Good afternoon. Compass Behavior Health requests to rezone the property generally located at 804 East Fulton Street from I3 Heavy Industrial District to C2, General Commercial District. The property was recently vacant and was previously owned by several businesses, including auto sales and auto repair. The applicant intends to use the property as office space for Compass Behavior Health, which is a permitted use within the C2, General Commercial District, but not the I3 Heavy Industrial District. The proposed use conforms with the Garden City Comprehensive Plan's future land use map, which identifies the property as mixed-use potential, which generally consists of commercial and residential uses. The surrounding property's zoning districts include the C2, General Commercial District, the I1 Light Industrial District, and the I3 Heavy Industrial District. Given the commercial and industrial districts and uses surrounding the property, the proposed use conforms with the neighborhood and will have no adverse effects on the nearby properties. If approved, the rezone and change of use would require a site plan review to ensure the property complies with the zoning regulations, including but not limited to a review of the parking calculations, parking layout, and landscaping. While any interior remodeling will require a building review to ensure compliance with the building code. The governing body may make its recommendation and state its finding according to the criteria in section 27.040, which is listed in the staff report. The planning commission recommended approval of the proposed rezoning request at the September 19th, 2024 meeting. And there are three alternatives in front of you. The governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Two, the governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. Or three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends the governing body adopt the planning commission's recommendation and approve the proposed ordinance. And there's no fiscal impact. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have. And there is a couple representatives from Compass Behavior Health here.
Questions?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 2996-2024. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-nine ninety-six dash twenty-two-four.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you, Dante. Commissioner Landgraf will step down for this item. Item ten E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from C-two, General Commercial, to R-two, Single Family Residential Condominium Townhouse District, to C-two, General Commercial District, for the property generally located at nine-hundred Leroux and East Schulman Avenue. If approved, it would be ordinance number twenty-nine ninety-seven dash twenty-two-four. Alicia.
Mayor and Commissioners, S.M.H. Consultants is requesting to rezone the property generally located at nine-hundred Leroux Road and East Schulman Avenue, from C-two, General Commercial District, R-two, Single Family Residential District, and R.C., Condominium Townhouse District, to C-two, General Commercial District. The property is part of the Sales and Tax Revenue, or STAR, bond for the development of recreational recreation venues, restaurant, and surface parking. A portion of this property went before the Planning Commission and City Commission in two thousand and nineteen and was approved to rezone to C-two, General Commercial District. However, there was a legal description discrepancy. The applicants are now requesting to rezone plus or minus thirty-two-point-four-one acres for the full development. The Garden City Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map makes this property as medium-density residential. The adjacent properties are a mix of C-two, General Commercial, R-one, Single Family Residential, and R-three, Multiple Family Residential Districts. The property is currently going through the plating process and site plan review for revisions of the proposed development. The governing body may make its recommendation and state its findings according to the criteria in section twenty-seven point zero four zero. Below is that complete list of the criteria, items A through I. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed rezoning request at the September nineteenth, twenty-two-four meeting by unanimous vote. Your alternatives today are the governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. The governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote, or the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying for the basis of the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. Staff recommends the governing body adopt the planning commission's recommendation and approve the proposed ordinance, and there's no fiscal impact.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number twenty-nine ninety-seven dash twenty-two-four.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Alicia, I just have one question on the applicant, or not the application, but the process. For the Planning Commission, they they did approve this, knowing that the plaque was...
That is correct. At the last meeting, the plaque was on the Planning Commission's agenda at the same time. However, they just have some more edits that they have before it comes before you.
Okay. So, there won't be no, I mean, they're aware of these getting changed and it's in the process of getting revised. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Commissioner Landgraf will return to the bench. Item ten F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from G.C., General Commercial, in the county, to C-two, General Commercial, in the city, for the property generally located at East Mary Street and Highway one fifty-six. John.
Wharf Land LLC is requesting to rezone the property generally located at East Mary Street and Highway one fifty-six, from G.C., General Commercial District, which is county zoning, to C-two, General Commercial District, which is city zoning. Property contains plus or minus ten point seventeen acres and is currently vacant. Property was recently annexed into city limits. At this time, the property owner has no plans for this for development on this property. The proposed land use is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use map has this property categorized as commercial potential. C-two, General Commercial District would be the most appropriate zoning district for this area. Rezoning the property will not affect any of the surrounding properties. The governing body may make its recommendation and state their findings according to the criteria in section twenty-seven point zero four zero, which is listed in your staff report, items A through I. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed amendment at the September nineteenth, twenty-two-four meeting by unanimous vote. There are three alternatives before you today. One, the governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Two, the governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. And three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends the governing body adopt the planning commission's recommendation and approve the proposed ordinance, and there's no fiscal impact.
Any questions? I hear a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion we approve ordinance twenty-nine ninety-eight dash twenty-two-four.
I second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you have any problem taking these out of order under new business? Mr. Hash is present and we could take twelve C and then then folks here on the opioid strategic or the opioid settlement funds, twelve F are here as well.
Okay.
Some of these other ones with dialing in and doing that could take a little bit of time. All right, in that case, we'll take up twelve C. The governing body is asked to consider a request from Jim Hash to connect a property located at three-seventeen South Taylor Avenue to the city sewer system. And a little bit of time for, oh, no. No time at all. There he is. Fred.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. City staff did receive a request from Jim Hash to connect this property to the city sewer system. Mr. Hash intends to construct a small residence at the location and has access to his own water supply, but due to the size of the property, it's too small to install a septic system. The property is not located adjacent to existing sewer infrastructure, and if approved, the connection to the sewer would require the property owner to construct a private sewer line across adjacent properties to reach the sewer system located in the vicinity of South Taylor Avenue and Lake Avenue. This is approximately five hundred feet south of the southeast corner of the petitioner's property. If approved, the petitioner will be required to meet the following conditions. The petitioner would be responsible to secure the necessary permissions to construct sewer line on private property and extend the line to an alignment where the connection to the city sewer system will be made perpendicular to the existing infrastructure located in the vicinity of South Taylor Avenue and Lake Avenue. Per the Code of City Ordinance of the City of Garden City, the tap fee will be two times the city rate, and the monthly sewer charge will be two times the rate as set in section ninety dash two-oh-four, subsection three. The petitioner will also be required to install on the petitioner's property any pumping equipment required to flow sewage into the city system. And the petitioner will be required to execute a pre-annexation agreement for the property prior to the issuance of any utility permits for this project. Alternatives for the governing body. The governing body may choose to approve the request of the petitioner to connect to the city sewer system with the conditions as outlined in this memo. The governing body may choose not to approve the request of the petitioner to connect to the city sewer system, or the governing body may propose an alternate solution. Staff recommends the governing body choose to approve the request of the petitioner to connect to the city sewer system with the conditions outlined in the memo. And Mr. Hash is available today if you have any questions for myself or him.
Fred, just kind of a quick clarification for the maintenance portion of this sewer line, is it, as far as maintaining it on another private property, does that expense go towards the owner of where it's coming from?
Yeah. Our sewer ordinance requires that the property owner is required for the maintenance of the sewer line from the city system to their home. So, this is not, this is no different than any other sewer connection, and Mr. Hash would be responsible for maintaining that line.
Okay, thank you.
Fred, has there been any exploration on our part or the petitioner's part on kind of sharing in the expense, but sharing in the access of with this, either of these two properties? This one actually says three-seventeen, so perhaps that's the petitioner's property as well, but I don't know if this four-oh-one, is that college? Is that the...
There's a little bit of addressing confusion on the mapping, but I did confirm that with G.I.S. that once this takes place, that will be the address for the property. Some of the issues we're running into there is the infrastructure is very shallow at South Taylor and Lake Avenue, and it kind of precludes having a gravity main in there. So, this will be kind of a forced main construction. And connecting multiple properties to it is somewhat difficult. There's a limited number of properties that would likely have an interest in that.
And that's a significant investment. I was just wondering if there's any way to, on their end of things, to lessen that? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Jim, do you have anything to add on that, or do you?
No. I'm just trying to get a little place there. I host several large events down there, and a lot of times, I either get a hotel room or stay in my trailer because I live forty miles away, and I'm here late and back early. I'm the rodeo coach at the college, for those who don't know. So, it is a little area there, and I did buy that from Bob Lee a few years ago to give additional use because we're limited on our installing at the college facilities. So, it does help, but it'd be a place for where I can stay from time to time. My younger boy, who's in college here now, can stay, and then it gives my older son, when he comes back, a place to be and kind of just helps with things. I'm not, like I say, I'm not very good at this, but I have a buddy who's kind of telling me what to do, and he can help me build it. And I don't know. I did talk to Nick. He's given me permission to to come through his land between the college. And then I told Ryan we need permission. He said he talked to Carla, so I don't think that'll be any issue, so. I already, like I say, I already have permission from Nick. I just need to get in the writing, I guess.
Yeah.
And then he said he might tie into me someday, too. I don't know how well that'll work or what, but he he has interest in doing some stuff there. I don't know. That's between you guys and him.
Yeah, we'll get through with the planning department and Fred and kind of assure that they are capable of doing that in a future date. But yeah, just going through the required process of permitting and construction permits and things like that for you to get started, that's all we ask. Appreciate you.
I'm trying, just trying to do everything by the book.
Sure. Appreciate it.
I've been begging Fred and Dante a month to keep telling me you're up against the big hurdle, and I'm like, well, sorry, I like hurdles.
Thanks, Jim Boy.
Thank you.
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the request of the presenter or petitioner to connect to the city sewer system with the conditions outlined pursuant to this, the memo that was presented to us.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
If we could skip down to twelve F then? The governing body is asked to consider and approve the proposed strategic plan for the expenditure of opioid settlement funds. Chief Pruitt.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Before you, as a request to consider and approve proposed strategic plan for expenditure of our opioid settlement funds. Some background, Kansas has secured multiple settlements with major pharmaceutical companies, distributors, and related entities as part of the state's effort to hold accountable those responsible for the opioid crisis. These settlements will provide more than four, I'm sorry, three hundred and forty million dollars to Kansas by twenty-thirty-eight specifically to combat and treat opioid addiction. In twenty-twenty-one, the Kansas Legislature passed the Kansas Fights Addiction Act, KSA seventy-five dash seven seventy-five, two, seven eighty-one, which governs the allocation of these funds. Under the act, seventy-five percent of the funds are directed to the Kansas Fights Addiction Fund for state-level initiatives, while twenty-five percent is allocated to the Municipality Fights Addiction Fund. The MFAF is distributed among two hundred and five participating municipalities, which includes the City of Garden City, based on payment shares outlined in an M.O.U., or Memorandum of Understanding, between the Kansas Attorney General's Office, the League of Kansas Municipalities, and the Kansas Association of Counties. On December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, the City Commission of, the City Commission of Garden City, passed resolution number twenty-eight ninety-six dash twenty-two-one, which was the first step required to access opioid litigation settlement funds and become eligible for certain state grants. The City of Garden City was then required to enter in to an agreement which released the city's opioid litigation claims to the Attorney General and assigned any future opioid litigation claims to the Kansas Attorney General. Upon passing this resolution, these settlement funds became available. Currently, the City of Garden City has a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents in its opioid settlement fund and is expected to receive a total of approximately two hundred and ninety thousand over the next fourteen years. The Garden City Police Department, in collaboration with the Service and Finance Director and the City Attorney, has thoroughly reviewed guidance from the Kansas Attorney General's Office to ensure complete understanding of the fund's guidelines. The department is also engaged with other city departments, local stakeholders, Louisville, Fannie County, and state and federal partners to explore explore potential projects. Given these funds will be distributed over several years, city staff intends to outline a strategic plan for their expenditure. Proposed projects include a digital message board for public education and notifications costing twenty-four thousand, five hundred, five hundred and forty-two dollars, a True Narc Narcotics Analyzer for safe and accurate identification of narcotics encountered on the street, costing thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-two cents, conducting a local needs assessment to determine specific community needs related to opioid addiction, formation of an advisory board to guide further funding decisions, and formation of an overdose fatality review board, sorry, to investigate and prevent opioid-related fatalities. This proposed plan encompasses both immediate actions and long-term initiatives. Immediate purchases such as the True Narc Narcotics Analyzer address critical safety concerns in identifying street-level narcotics. Additionally, the digital message boards will enhance public education efforts. Long-term projects such as the advisory boards and needs assessment will contribute to improving health, safety, and security of the community over time. The alternatives you have before you is you may approve the proposed strategic plan for expenditure of the opioid settlement funds, or you may reject the proposed strategic plan and provide additional guidance. Staff recommends the governing body approve the proposed strategic plan for expenditure of these funds. On a fiscal note, currently, we have a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-two cents in the opioid settlement funds and is expected to end up with two hundred and ninety thousand approximately over the next fourteen years. The immediate purchases would be the True Narc Analyzer and the digital message board for a total of sixty-three thousand, thirty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents upon approval. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Over the next fourteen years, chief, the two hundred and ninety thousand, is that each year, or is that, I mean, is that broken up? Two hundred and ninety divided by fourteen? That's...
I don't know if it's exactly two hundred and ninety, but two hundred and ninety by fourteen, but it's total.
Okay. Thank you. Well, congratulations on that, now, leaving those dollars, and that's going towards a good effort to fight this opioid abuse.
I think it's a worthy cause.
Yeah. So, appreciate you going out for those. Any other questions?
Mayor, I approve, I make a motion to approve the strategic plan as presented.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further... Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And pull back and revisit 12A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an agreement regarding the Law Enforcement Center dispatching and jail services between the City of Garden City and Fannie County. At the June 18th, 2024 City Commission meeting, the governing body approved providing notice to terminate the existing agreement between the City of Garden City and Fannie County for use of the Law Enforcement Center. As noted during that meeting, there is currently an effort underway to determine next steps for a new jail solution, as well as refurbish the law enforcement center. The intent of this agreement is to serve as a temporary agreement until that project is completed and both the Garden City Police Department and Fannie County Sheriff's Office are able to co-locate in the same facility again. This agreement continues the dispatching and jail services of they, as they have been previously provided, with the city providing dispatch services for Fannie County at no charge and Fannie County providing jail services to the city at no charge. Additionally, this agreement would allow city staff to remain in the facility through December 31st, 2025. Finally, the agreement attached includes a $50,000 annual payment to Fannie County to continue to maintain the facility despite not having city staff present. This payment would begin in 2026, and it's really a recognition that even an empty building has some maintenance needs. The city understands that, yeah, there are still costs associated with, even though we're temporarily housed in another location. The County Commission considered this agreement at their October 7th, 2024 meeting and approved the agreement on a four-to-one vote as written. The city looks forward to continuing to participate in ongoing discussions about the future jail and use of the law enforcement center. Finally, the GCPT highly values the current and ongoing partnership with the Fannie County Sheriff's Office and looks forward to continuing that relationship going forward. Your alternatives are to approve the agreement as written or to not approve the agreement and give staff additional direction. We recommend approving the agreement. Beginning in 2026, the budget would need to allocate $50,000 annually to Fannie County and would keep the existing relationship of the city providing dispatch services to the county at no charge and the county providing jail services to the city at no charge. That $50,000 annual fee is a reduction in what we pay annually right now for maintenance on the LEC. Keep in mind, though, we'll have another facility that'll have maintenance needs, so that would be likely a net increase in that line item.
Matt, do you? I guess my question is, how long do you foresee us paying this for?
I don't have a crystal ball. So I know the discussions are pointing towards the County Commission making significant progress over the next few months on what the jail, the future of jail services might look like. They'll have a plan in place, but then they'll need to kind of put a funding mechanism plan in place as well before they start that project. After that project is completed, I think the idea is that changes the LEC remodel significantly, particularly the third-floor plumbing, which is the culprit in kind of the undesirable effects of the sewage coming down on to the personnel. And so stacking those major projects on top of each other, this is a multi-year temporary agreement. How many multis is anybody's guess? As we consider the proposals in coming meetings on temporary temporary housing options for, for our police department, I think we can be, we need to take those into consideration as well when we look for our, look for our new place. This cover, this agreement covers this really no matter how, how long that, that temporary period is.
Matt, can I add one thing?
Sure.
The compensation, the agreement can go on for as long as it needs to go on, but the compensation piece does have a cutoff date of 2032. So that payment that you're making each month stops at either the sooner of 2032 or you moving back into an LEC that has been prepared for them to go back to sharing.
Thank you.
That really makes it tough to kind of move out as far as we need to, we need, I mean, strategic planning on our efforts to find a different location would affect our budget if we moved out next year. From the looks of this, am I, am I reading it correct? Because the payment wouldn't begin until 2026, but yet we still have our current agreement with the payment of what we pay now to remain in there until 2025, December 2025.
Correct.
Or is that backwards?
Yeah, so you, you would complete one and then start the new one. So you're not paying both, you're never paying both at the same time.
Yeah, next year will, next year financially will be treated just as the past, however many years where we, we pay the full maintenance fee that's in the original agreement.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve the agreement as written.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve accepting the 2024 Fannie County Community Housing Assessment Team Report. Alicia?
Mayor and Commissioners, the city has utilized reinvestment housing incentive districts, RHD, for housing development since 2012. Throughout that time, there have been changes to the program. However, one of the requirements for continued use of that tool is the city to complete a housing needs analysis. The city accomplishes this through the acceptance of the Community Housing Assessment Team, or the CHAT, report that is completed every few years. This tool helps outline the need for housing in our community. The report breaks out Fannie County, Garden City, and Holcombe separately and is done in coordination with Fannie County Economic Development Corporation. Your alternatives today are the governing body may accept the 2024 Community Housing Assessment Team Report, or the governing body may not accept the 2024 Community Housing Assessment Team Report and provide staff with an alternative direction. Staff recommends the governing body approve the 2024 Community Housing Assessment Team Report, and there's no fiscal impact.
Might add that when we go around every year to our community sister agencies, partner agencies, the school district, the college, and Fannie County, this is the report that we use to talk about the ongoing housing need. When we began using the redevelopment housing incentive district as a development tool over a decade ago, we pledged to annually go back and present the most current, and not only the most current needs analysis, but then also the performance, the number of residential units that had been constructed in the previous year and kind of show those, those slopes in relationship to one another. And so this updates that material, so when we present to them probably right after the start of the year, this will be the new report that we share with, with those agencies.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the 2024 Fannie County Chat Report as presented.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider a request for an extension and increased budget as requested by Garden City Plaza LLC. Jared?
On December 21st, 2021, the city entered into a community improvement district development agreement with Garden City Plaza LLC that outlined the terms of the CID for the property generally located at 2200 Kansas Avenue. The agreement outlines that the project will be completed by December 31st, 2024, and the redevelopment costs are to be capped at $1,508,348. To date, the developers submitted $1,244,771.51 in eligible expenditures. The attached letter requests the governing body consider extending the completion date 24 months to December 31st, 2026, and to increase the authorized redevelopment cost by $1 million for a total of $2,508,348. If the governing body is supportive of the requested changes, an amendment to the existing development agreement will be brought back at a future meeting. The alternatives before the governing body today are that they may direct staff to draft an amendment to the existing development agreement granting the 24-month extension and increased project budget of $1 million. The governing body may direct staff to draft an amendment to the existing development agreement granting the 24-month extension or increased project budget of $1 million, or the governing body may direct staff to keep the development agreement as it currently is written and not draft any amendments. And staff has no recommendation on this matter. As a fiscal note, the CID in the district is currently 1% and will be in place for 2020 years from initiation or until such time as all the reimbursable expenditures have been paid. There's no direct fiscal impact to the city for this extension or amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can for you at this time.
Any questions?
How has the, how has the property developer explained the progress on their enhancements out there as far as tenants go?
So they, as far as tenants go, they submitted one submission that's far from the $1,244,771.51. Some of that was parking lot, some of it was, a lot of it's for the Ollies building and incorporating getting Ollies to come out. They have plans for some facade of the rest of the building. As they talk about the additional expense, some of it I think is roofing, but a lot of it is tenant improvement allowances, kind of what the conversation has been, in an effort to entice those spots to be more appealing to vendors to come in. But they haven't necessarily disclosed that they've been, have negotiations ongoing with any specific vendor or anything of that nature.
And the CID is 22 years from?
From when it started, so I believe the CID came out in 22, 2022, it started.
Right, okay.
Collections. They hadn't done all their project costs, but the money starts accumulating and the city is basically holding it as an escrow fund until such time as those expenses have been reviewed and provided as valid, and then the disbursement starts. So they just recently provided us the first submission of those project costs. The developer to date has not been dispersed any of those funds, but they've been accruing for the last couple of years. So that will continue on for another 20 years or until they were able to recoup enough that it pays off the full reimbursed, approved reimbursable amount.
I think revitalizing the plaza or assisting too could help us grow our sales tax, et cetera. That's what I'm seeing now.
Well, really, the incentive is for the developer, the more properties they have occupied collecting sales tax, the more collections come back to them for the CID, and so it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. If, if they could increase it to $1 million, if the governing body was amenable to that amendment, but they don't collect any more sales tax, they don't bring any more tenants, there's no reimbursement that's going to cover that $1 million unless that sales tax increases and that threshold goes up. So the risk is still there for the developer as well.
Mayor, I move that we direct staff to draft an amendment to the existing development agreement granting the 24-month extension and increased project budget of $1 million.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Moved and seconded on the first, alternate number one, in case to draft an amendment to the existing development agreement granting the 24-month extension and increased project budget of $1 million.
How much is currently in the CID then?
How much has been collected?
Yeah.
I don't have that off the top of my head. I could get back to you on that one.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I was just.
It's a good question. I would, I would tell you.
The reason why we put the CID in place was to help get them motivated, and I think a lot of it too was at the time when we approved that was to help with enhancements on the facade and the parking lot to help that, to move the project for, you know, to help try to get developments in, in place. So I was just wondering how much we currently had. And thanks for letting me know when we got it started. It's been a few years, so. Was my only question.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we do have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
May.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
Item 12E. The governing body is asked to consider a late application for the neighborhood, well, I need to call in. Sorry. Do this first.
Thank you for calling Petra, where we help investors succeed through real estate. If you know your part of extension, please dial it now.
Thank you for calling Petra. This is Heather.
Hi, Heather. This is Matt Allen, City Manager in Garden City. We're in a City Commission meeting now and we've reached the agenda item that is related to Petra's request. So if you, if you can hear me, we'll proceed with that.
I hear you fine.
Okay, very good. All right. Mayor and Commissioners, item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider a late application for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program on behalf of Petra Petro Protect LLC for 1408 Buffalo Jones Avenue. And I'll turn this over to Alicia to give you the rest of the background.
Mayor and Commissioners, according to the criteria for determination of eligibility for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, or the NRP, the applicant must complete an application for the tax rebate within 180 days of issuance of a building permit. A building permit for 1408 Buffalo Jones Avenue was issued on March 10th, 2023. The estimated project cost on the permit was $824,000 and was to transition the property from a motel to multifamily. The current maximum permit value to qualify for NRP for multifamily is $500,000. So this project exceeds the allowable threshold outlined in the existing program. The project received a certificate of occupancy on August 25th, 2023. Over the last 10 years, there have been several late requests for NRP brought before the governing body. Below is a list of those late applications and the recommendation by the governing body. This application request was submitted 392 days after the deadline and exceeds the authorized building permit value for multifamily projects. The alternatives today are the governing body may approve the proposed request to submit a late application for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, or the governing body may not approve the proposed request to submit a late application for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. Staff is unable to make a recommendation as this request exceeds the guidelines of the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. And for the fiscal note, if alternative one is chosen, 75% of the increase in annual property tax will be rebated back to the property owners for the next seven years. No fiscal note is associated with alternative number two.
Okay, are there any questions?
They always come to us, I mean, 392 days is just way past the deadline. I mean, do we? And I know the other ones that have been brought before us, we always ask, do they understand that, that there is this program in place and within 180 days of that?
Yes.
Occupancy?
So we do our best to hand out the information to all the developments that come through that we see fit the NRP. However, this one does exceed that amount in general, and we have not received their application officially. But we do, as staff, do our best to talk to all the developers, get this information to them, remind them when they hand in their building permit. I think remind them when they hand in their building permit, I think, you know, as we are trying to go through and updating the program. Shortening the days will probably be more helpful. I think, we think a hundred and eighty days and we think, oh, I have plenty of time and, and sometimes they just forget. And as staff, we do our best to, to remind them.
Any other?
You want to allow Heather to kind of give their, we do have your letter Heather, that, or the one Noah, sent is included in the, the packet, anything you want to add in addition to that?
I know, excuse me, I know we started talking back in two thousand and twenty-three with Lana and Steve Cottrell and we were supposed to get information from them and then we never got anything to complete the NRP. And then we got like another notification around the time that we submitted the thing, the application. And we thought we'd be okay, we didn't realize it was a hundred and eighty days past due. But we were starting the NRP, but we were supposed to be waiting on information from the state or the city, I'm sorry, from Lana and Steve, but we never got that information, it was just set up in, so nothing was ever replied back to us. And then we started reaching out again to get information and that's when we submitted our application to hopefully get approved.
Yeah, from the understanding of the, the request on the amount of the project would have triggered a non qualification part of that process as well, so. That could have probably triggered, you know, I guess a project that would be exceeding the amount of the NRP and not qualifying at that point as well.
Yeah, so the discussions that they're drawing back on are discussions happening in early two thousand and twenty-three. The notion that at that time was that the project they proposed would have exceeded the thresholds. And actually, the, the request now exceeds the thresholds of what is allowed under the city's ordinance. The, if the, if the project were broken up into two sections, if those were split and they would approach one project, pull a permit for one project, do that project, pull a permit for the second project, do that project. They pulled a permit for one project at the full value of it and moved forward with that project, so. You know, I don't know what would have been going through anybody's heads on their side or with the Fannie County Economic Development Corporation on their side. But while that concept was brought up in the preliminary discussions, all of the action after that by the developer was, you know, as evidenced by them pulling the permit on the, on the project itself was one project at one time, so, you know, I don't. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that what they're representing is, is is erroneous, I mean, it's certainly their perspective of where that conversation was. But I do think, you know, it was, I think it was pretty clear if this goes through as one project, pulling one, one building permit for one project, it's going to exceed the thresholds allowed under the neighborhood revitalization plan for the city as approved in the nineteen nineties, which had hard caps, not just on the maximum of the benefit. It kicked you out of the project and made you ineligible altogether, which is one of the things we're looking at changing, moving down the road, is that nobody's just automatically disqualified from being eligible. It may cap the benefit, but when this was authored thirty years ago, which is what we're operating under, it didn't give the commission or the, or the staff that flexibility. And I do think we have some representation from the development corporation here in the holding room if they want to speak to the item. Or if they came in the room. I saw Steve back there anyways.
Hello, Steve.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Steve.
My recollection is that when there was discussion of splitting the project up, we made a request of the county appraiser's office as to how best to do that. Create separate parcels and never got a response and it dropped at that point.
So this, was this originally in the county for this development or is this the city?
No, this is inside the city.
But the appraiser's office is critical in the process.
For the, for the, yes, yeah, correct.
So that, you know, we're trying to get a read from them on the best way to proceed.
Do you have a recollection, recollection of when that kind of conversation of splitting the parcels tapered off?
It would have been back early in this process when they were thinking about acquiring the property or doing the remodel. Specific dates, I don't recall, Commissioner.
And without that information, Steve, your recollection is you were waiting on the, the appraisers, Fannie County's Appraiser's Office for that information, but Petra proceeded with the project, obviously has completed it.
Yes, we've completed it, we have, it's two sections, one side of it is a restaurant slash, we're trying to rinse that out right now, but the other side is multifamily studio homes. And there's about fifty-six studios there that we've converted.
Well, I guess for me, the, the length of the delay in submission, the three hundred and ninety-two days plus the, the not being in compliance with current ordinance for the, for the project, I would make the motion that we not approve the request to the late application for the neighborhood revitalization program.
A second.
And I would, I would agree, this, Heather, this is Mayor Ortiz and I, I think we kind of, from past history, there's, there's been other considerations of us approving a request and it's just fallen on facts of the application process being clear cut and dry on the timeline and also the amount of the project being of the application, so. Not that we're just trying to play hardball here, but we would want to work with everybody in the, in the most nicest fashion and, and make sure that you are a good investor in which you are, of investing your project here in Garden City. So I think just the facts that it's the application process of, of that being the, the timeline and the amount of the project, that's kind of the hindrance on this, on this decision, so. There has been a first and a second on the motion to deny the pro, the application. If there's no further discussion, we'll go to a call, a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
All right, thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Item twelve G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a transition to utilizing the regulatory basis of accounting prescribed in the Kansas Municipal Auditing and Accounting Guide for their annual audit. The city currently prepares its financial statements utilizing U.S. generally accepted accounting principles and issues an annual comprehensive financial report. Jared?
Good afternoon again. GAAP, or the Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, is the national standard for accounting and financial statement reporting. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, is the accepted standard setting body for establishing governmental accounting and financial reporting principles. All municipalities are to follow the GAAP accounting reporting model unless otherwise authorized by the state. KMAC is the Kansas Guidance and Standards for Auditing and Accounting Practices specifically tailored to municipalities within the state of Kansas. Kansas municipalities have the option to waive GAAP requirements using a standard resolution and adopt the KMAC regulatory basis of accounting. Through KSA study five dash one, one, two, zero, A, Kansas allows for the KMAC financial statement as a result of GAAP financial statement requirements becoming more complex, but not necessarily more useful to the users of the financial statements. KMAC is reviewed and revised annually and is overseen by the Board of Editors comprised of members of the Kansas Society of CPAs and the Kansas State Division of Accounts and Reports. These annual revisions are approved and prescribed by the Director of the Division of Accounts and Reports within the Kansas Department of Administration. Some things a municipality would expect when switching from GAAP financial statements to KMAC financial statements include KMAC accounting aligning with Kansas budget and cash basis laws. KMAC financial statements are prepared on a modified accrual basis of accounting, meaning the financial statements are very similar to the budget, making the budget preparation process easier and the financial reporting and accounting process is less confusing. The KMAC financial statement is more understandable to users. It consists of one statement, the summary statement of receipts, expenditures, and non encumbered cash, which gives the big picture of the whole municipality. This allows departments and administration to see a simple report by fund and know where they are on, where they are on cash in order to make educated decisions. Additional note disclosures and schedules are also required. Outside users such as state of Kansas agencies, debt issuers, and taxpayers can understand the KMAC financial statement easier than the GAAP financial statements. Accounting and audit requirements are specific to the type of financial statement issued, KMAC or GAAP. Because KMAC financial statements do not have items that GAAP financial statements have, for example, accounts receivable, deferred revenues or expenses, inventory, fixed assets, and related depreciation, accounting for these items and audit procedures over them are not required. Consequently, this can mean fewer requirements internally for staff and software features needed to account for these specific items, as well as fewer other requirements. While not required under KMAC, the municipality can still choose to account for these items as desired. In consideration of a potential transition, Finance Director Coleman consulted with the city's bond advisor, Steve Foel, bond counsel, Trivile Carrington, and auditors Louis Hooper and Dick L.L.C. He also conversed with the Finance Director of Dodge City, Nicole May, as they underwent a transition to KMAC in two thousand and twenty. Public Works Utilities Director Mike Muir had consulted with KMEA to evaluate the impact to KMEA by the potential transition by the city to KMAC. Director May of Dodge City indicated that they were pleased with the impact of their transition, they did not experience any adverse effects from the decision. They had been worried that they would potentially see a downgrade and impact to their bond rating, but have not seen that come to fruition. She indicated that the commissioners particularly reported more understanding of the financials they were presented through the audit. KMEA did not express a concern with the city's potential transition, though indicated that such would need to be disclosed due to continuing disclosure agreements in place for both the Dogwood and Jameson bonds, indicating that the city would be utilizing GAAP. Those CDAs could, could be amended or disclosure could be provided each year whether the city was not in compliance with that requirement. It is not anticipated such a disclosure would be an issue. Similarly, the bond counsel Carson indicated that similar disclosures would need to be made in conjunction with the city's outstanding general obligation bonds as similar continuing disclosure agreements indicated the city would continue to utilize GAAP. Bond advisor Shroberin advised that based on conversations with the city's typical analyst from Moody's who provides the city's bond rating, it was not certain that this would impact the city's bond rating in the future, but that there was a potential that it could. He indicated that an issue with a non GAAP audit would receive a downgrade on the scorecard used by Moody's when evaluating an entity. However, this scorecard is not the only factor in a rating and that entity matches the scorecard only twenty-five percent of the time. As an example, Garden City currently calculates to an AA two rating on the scorecard, but Moody's has consistently chosen to rate the city at a lower grade of AA three. If the city did receive a downgrade in rating, it is anticipated that that would translate to a ten to twenty basis point difference for the interest rate received on bids for the city's geo-bonds. As an example, if the bond issuance for two thousand and twenty-four of a principal of eight million, one hundred and fifteen thousand were to receive a four point two five percent interest rate, which is the rate we were anticipating or using for calculations, the total interest cost over the twenty-year debt service would be four million, seventy-seven thousand, three dollars and seventy-five cents. If the city experienced a downgrade that caused the interest rate to be four point four five, the total interest would be four million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents, which represents a five percent increase accounting to two hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty cents over the twenty-year life of the bond, or ten thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars per year. To conceptualize the aggregate impact over future years of this potential downgrade, we can look what five percent increase of this year's interest cost for outstanding, all the city's outstanding general obligation, obligation bonds would be. The city's two thousand and twenty-four interest costs for outstanding general obligation bonds for the general fund and utility funds is two million, sixty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. A five percent increase would amount to an additional cost of approximately one hundred and three thousand here in this year. After consultation with these parties, staff have identified the following, the following anticipated benefits or consequences of a transition to KMAC. Benefits include, the city's annual accounting and audit processes will be greatly simplified, significantly decreasing the amount of staff time spent preparing financial data required for the financial statements and the auditors, and therefore increasing staff's productivity in other areas. The simplified audit would reduce the city's spending on extra accounting services in conjunction with the audit to comply with the many requirements and facets of GAAP by an estimated seventy to one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per year. In two thousand and twenty-four, the city anticipates a total cost of approximately two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the accounting services for the annual audit. The city would not be required to have an actuarial perform, study performed on the post-retirement health insurance benefit with savings of approximately eight thousand dollars per year. The city could eliminate subscriptions to software specifically purchased and utilized to track GASB requirements with a savings of approximately eight thousand per year. And financial statements would be far easier for commissioners, staff, and citizens to comprehend and would align with the budget information presented each year. Potential consequences include disclosures being required for outstanding general obligation bonds of the city as well as outstanding bonds related to Dogwood and Jameson through KMEA. And a potential downgrade of the city's bond rating could negatively impact interest costs for future bonds issued. Attached to this item are the following, a chart prepared by the city's auditors Louis Hooper and Dick L.L.C. to highlight the different elements required under a GAAP versus KMAC accounting audit, as well as a copy of the two thousand and twenty-three audit report for Dodge City, as they currently utilize KMAC accounting. And this is a good example of what a city's audit report would consist of should a transition be made. Dodge Cities is really just kind of giving you an outlook of the layout of the format. We didn't dive into their financials and our representative financials anyway, but really just kind of the format, sixty-page document rather than a two-hundred-page document. The alternative before the governing body today, that they may approve a transition to KMAC in preparation for the two thousand and twenty-four audit, or that the governing body may not approve a transition to KMAC and continue to utilize GAAP. The recommendation for the staff is that the governing body approve a transition to KMAC in preparation for the two thousand and twenty-four audit. As a fiscal note, while individual fiscal impacts of various elements of the transition are outlined above, it is anticipated that annual expenses of between eighty-six thousand and one hundred and thirty-one thousand would be reduced by the adoption of KMAC in conjunction with the expenses related to the annual audit. The savings could incrementally increase over time, as it would be anticipated that the annual cost would continue to increase with the adoption of future GASB requirements. If the city were to receive a decrease in bond rating, there would be a negative impact to the cost of interest for any bonds issued in the future, while hard to aggregately predict due to the variability of interest rates as well as amounts issued in each year's general obligation bond, based on the city's debt service total for two thousand and twenty-four, a generalized five percent increase in interest costs would constitute approximately a hundred thousand per year if realized. The, two, couple of representatives, we have Teresa Dazabrock and Kristen Sekovic from our auditing agency here that can speak a little bit on kind of their analysis of this and their perspective as well. But really, the, a lot of conversation has been had, a lot of work has been done to kind of decide where we stand. I'll let them speak for a little bit and I'd be happy to help answer any questions that you guys may have.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I don't know that I have too much more to add to what Jared shared with you. The chart does pretty well lay out, we put that together for Jared as to what the, what you see now in your financial statements versus what you would see under a regulatory basis KMAC financial statement. The KMAC financial statements do follow the budget law, so there, there's not all these extra journal entries. And if you remember from the audit, there were fifty pages of journal entries maybe. So, so there would be considerable time savings there in that. I think Commissioner Sessna has seen the regulatory basis at the school district. If you've looked at Fannie County's financial statements, their regulatory basis, so, so they're not uncommon in our area. You know, as far as the audit process, a lot of the audit procedures stay the same. We're not going to be changing that. It would just be a matter of there's certain areas like the fixed assets, the inventory, some of those that aren't reported in the regulatory basis financial statements, so we won't be performing procedures on that. That's not to say city staff would just quit dealing with that altogether. That's not the case, there's still good controls in place there that they need to be maintaining. A lot of work went into getting the fixed asset records put together when the city first started doing the GAAP basis financial well over twenty years ago. And we encourage you to continue to do that. Whether or not you had us do any type of testing or procedures on that would have to be determined and probably it's done outside of the audit, but with. and probably is done outside of the audit, that would certainly be a lot less costly to do it that way. However, these are the city's financial statements. We just audit what you provide us, and so the decision rests with you. If there's any questions, we'll try and address them.
Teresa, I have a question for you. You have, I would say Louis Hooper and Dick is kind of the most prevalent governmental accounting agency in our neck of the woods. So you have a lot of clients that could have the option of choosing GAAP or regulatory basis. What percentage or what number do GAAP?
Less than 5%. And of that 5%, probably half of that is they don't have a choice. They have to do GAAP. There are a few entities in the state that are not allowed to do a GAAP waiver, but most all of the other public entities are going with the regulatory basis.
Well, I know the reason why, since I've been on the commission, one of the reasons why we do this or go with GAAP is because of mainly the bond rating and going after bonds, which, I mean, just like for an example today with our bond letting and approval, you know, that helps us with the bonds that we do go after to help, you know, with projects and everything. You know, reading the memo, it's kind of a wash. I mean, I could see where it helps reduce the load on staff, the less, you know, where we have less of an audit report instead of the 200-plus pages that we receive, you know, what we were provided by the Dodge City report. I don't know, I'm kind of torn between, and then reading the memo, it kind of offsets, it's kind of a wash, it almost looks like, but.
Financially?
Yes.
Yeah, so if we receive a downgrade, it could be comparably a wash per se for the accounting of how much you gain in one session and how much you lose in the other. If we don't receive a downgrade, which is a possibility, then there's significant savings for the city. I also think that down the road, there continues to be kind of overhauls or adjustments made in the GAAP and through GASB where new regulations come out. About every two years, there's a new requirement or a new something, and so we've added some software subscriptions. We've added different levels of our accounting that take into consideration how to even tackle these new regulations. So as those come to fruition, that would be additional costs that would come into our budget. So I think right now it's pretty much a wash, but in perpetuity, it really could have a greater divide between that downgrade impact versus the total overhaul. The other piece is that's kind of hard to quantify is just how much staff time would be saved on our side, the city side, in preparing the audit until we can go through the process and really find the lines in the sand of how much simpler it is. That's hard to put on paper, but I would anticipate a significant decrease in staff time. The auditors are typically onsite for at least a week. They come out in November usually for kind of a preliminary time, and we can probably cut those times down where we're occupied with them, as well as the staff's obligation time just prepping everything. So then you turn around, you have a cost savings there for other productivity of the staff who work on their things. On paper, the fiscal impact immediately right now could definitely be a wash if we received that downgrade, but if not, then it's definitely a financial advantage to the city as well.
And if we don't receive a downgrade, the savings you estimate to be about $100,000 a year?
Ballpark, yeah, 85 to 130.
Right now on our rating, is Brett still here? Our scorecard would suggest we have more AA2 rates than AA3 rates. We get rated at an AA3, so we've never, I guess, fully realized the AA2, which is, if you went straight off the scorecard, would suggest we'd get. And again, we don't know until somebody rates us under this of what the impact would be, but you indicated, did Dodge City use Moody's or do they use Standard and Poor?
They use SMP.
They use SMP, and they did not, they did not receive a downgrade after they made the switch. So that, you know, is that, if that one thing we get scored on pulls us down, it would impact that particular bond issuance. Doesn't rule out that we could switch rating companies to somebody that didn't put quite as heavy of a weighting, but.
I think the other just kind of factor to make sure is clearly communicated here, that $100,000 estimated increase in cost would be taking every bond issuance that the city currently has outstanding, and the interest costs we're paying for all outstanding bonds, if they would each come in at 5% at initiation. Well, we would actually experience that pain little by little over the next 10 years as we issue new bonds and old bonds are retired. And so this bond issuance would have been about $10,000 impact this year at a 5% increased cost. So where we saved the 100-plus thousand next year, we pay enough $10,000. The following year, if we issue $8 million again, maybe it's another $10,000 on top of what it would have been. If we have smaller bond issuances, that cost per year comes down significantly as well. And so it would be an aggregate stair step of time before that $100,000 added cost would even be realized by the city, probably 10 to 15 years. But I wanted to present that number as a long-term perspective. This is what that impact would look like. And if, at that point, the savings on the audit side are 200,000 because there's additional requirements, you're still kind of hedged there.
And then the disclosures on, for the bonds that we have on Dogwood and Jamison, that's just, that's just letting them know that we're just transitioning to a different accounting practice.
Yeah, we've found that we're indicating that we're out of compliance with what the original agreement stated because we shifted.
But that shouldn't change anything with, okay.
Yeah, no concerns were built up that that would impact anything.
Got you.
No concerns with the software also? Tyler Technologies on the accounting process?
No, Tyler Technologies is built for you there. It's really not going to change much on that. The software that we have specifically that are third-party outside other than Tyler that we use, we have one work for Debtbook that tracks all of our GO bond issuances, and now we've added in our software, our IT software as a service agreements in our leases, and we could remove that tracking in that module if we are going to be compliant with the GASB piece, and that would be the $8,000 a year saving.
Cool. Mayor, I move we approve a transition to K-MAG in preparation for the 2024 audit.
I second.
Okay, so they moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
Item 12H, the governing body is asked to consider a recommendation from the city attorney and special electric utility council to, I lost my spot, to related to findings of fact and conclusions with regard to the selection of a retail electric supplier for properties annex pursuant to ordinance number 2975-2024. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I am before you. We did work with special electric utility council on this, but determined that not both of us needed to be here today, so I'm presenting it to you. A couple of important pieces on this one because there were a few things that happened that were different than in our normal process, and so I want to point those out. The first is that you all voted to annex real property at 3210 East Mary Street in Garden City, Kansas, which is what we're calling the annexed property. You did this under the 2975-2024 ordinance on February 6, 2024, but there was a development agreement issue that actually postponed the publication of that, and because that took place, it didn't become effective until August 15th of 2024. And then at the time of the annexation, there were streetlights that were being served by Wheatland Electric, and that's what is part of this particular electric utility service. So as you all are aware, you're required to go through certain factors as you determine who should be the electric utility provider, and I'm going to run through those quickly, although your memo does outline them in more detail. Typically, when both sides present the factors, we will go over them in more detail, but in this particular case, as you are aware, only the city presented to be the electric utility provider, and Wheatland said that they weren't interested, and we went ahead and negotiated and figured out the payment compensation for them. So since those weren't presented, we'll just run through what the factors are for those that are listening. One is the public convenience and necessity, rates of the various suppliers that are offering their service, desires of customers that are being served, economic impact on any suppliers, economic impact on the customers of the suppliers, the supplier's operational ability to serve the annexed area, avoiding the wasteful duplication of facilities, avoiding unnecessary encumbrance on the landscape, preventing the waste of materials and natural resources, proposals from any retail electric supplier holding a certificate in the annexed area, whether the selection is in the public interest as it relates to all the factors considered by the city. So these are the ones that you guys always go through in this particular case. We do have written communication from Wheatland that they are not interested in serving this area, and we also agreed on the payment of $596.58 to be paid to Wheatland in satisfaction of KSA 661176F 1 through 4, and that payment has already been made in satisfaction of that agreement. So before you today, there are three alternatives. The first is that the governing body would conclude that the city utility department shall be the retail electric service provider in properties annex pursuant to ordinance numbers 2975-2024, and that Wheatland Electric has been and will continue to be compensated for the termination of its retail service rights according to state law. In alternative two, you may choose to select another retail electric provider, and in alternative three, you can direct staff or myself to other alternatives on this issue. The recommendation from myself and also from special electric utility council is that you accept alternative number one and move forward with that.
Mayor, I make the motion that we conclude that the city utility department shall be the retail electric service provider and the properties annex pursuant to ordinance number 2975-2024, and that Wheatland Electric has been and will continue to be compensated for the termination of its retail service rights according to state law.
I second.
Okay, so they moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, item 12I as well as item 12J are both executive sessions. No action is anticipated following either of those executive sessions. So if you'd like to take up the consent agenda and then the commission reports, we can do that and then shut down broadcast of the meeting. Consent agenda, if approved, would be consent agenda item 13A through 13C.
Mayor, I move to approve a consent agenda 13A through 13C.
I second.
Okay, so they moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, our next up will be the city commission reports, and then we'll go into executive session after that. First on the list would be Commissioner Landgraf.
So just wanted to say it was a good pre-meeting this morning in regards to airport security. It's good to know it's going to be a little bit different for some of the people out there at the airport compared to what we've had previously, but these are items that we need in regards to having a growing airport that gets bigger and bigger as time goes on, as we are a growing city. Also, just wanted to say congrats to Bob on 40 years with the city. That really is truly an honor to be here with us for that long, working for the city. Also, I had the opportunity back on October 4th to go to the KLPG Annual Meeting. It was a great event, bringing together representatives from all across southwest Kansas, and it was really good hearing from representatives from multiple state agencies regarding the available resources, programs, the assistance and incentives that can be given to different cities and counties across Kansas, even though some of these programs might not, Garden City might not be eligible for. It is good having these programs for the smaller cities since we are the regional hub in southwest Kansas. Also, just want to remind folks that today is the last day to register to vote for the 2024 general election, and also just want to remind folks that in-person early voting at the Finney County Election Office begins on Monday, October 21st, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday until November 3rd, and also that early voting is available Tuesday, October 29th, from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Saturday, November 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Monday, November 4th, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Next, Commissioner Wen.
Yeah, thank you to Bob for his four decades of service to our Garden City community. That is definitely inspiration of hard work and dedication. We are so grateful for you, Bob. Thank you to Beth and the Livwell Coalition for requesting proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. Our friends at Livwell also recommended me to offer a keynote at the Kansas Prevention Collaborative Annual Conference two weekends ago in Wichita, and while I was there, the common phrase that I kept hearing from all of these communities, all these coalitions, was that "Livwell is the gold standard for coalitions across the state," and so we are very, very lucky to have Livwell staff here in Garden City, and also the tremendous work that the high schoolers and resister are completing. This past weekend, I was at the League of Kansas Municipalities, and I'd like to be one of the first to graduate vice mayor Sessna for being elected as League's president. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tons of great information that ranged from rural housing to grants to addressing conflict. It was really consoling to know that, sitting in a room of all these movers and shakers, that we are all struggling with the same things, and knowing that we are doing our very best to try to solve this problem. And when I left, it was definitely a breath of fresh air that filled me with a lot of motivation and encouragement to keep hitting the ground running here in Garden City. And yesterday morning, I spoke at AP Hubert to some of the first graders. Such a blast. We spoke about how to be great community members and how to foster great, sorry, how to be good community members to foster a great community, and it's one of the best first graders I've ever been in, so we're in tune on the edge of the seats the whole time. It was a blast. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we'll have Commissioner Sessna.
Yeah, just a great shout out to Bob and his 40 years of service, and being recognized at a national, a state level is always nice. And then following up with what Commissioner Landgraf was noting, that today is the last day to register to vote for the upcoming election on November 5th. So if you haven't done so, please do so by today. Other than that, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Andrew is absent today, so he asked that we would just, he would appreciate prayers for those impacted by the storms. He is out of the country, so prayers for good weather where he is at as well. He appreciates that. I won't repeat everybody, but yeah, congratulations to all around for the awards and the people that have gone above and beyond for those awards. But I would like to, I did have a conversation at the beginning of this month with some questions, and I did field a lot of those questions, and I gave those out to staff for answers, and I'll have Matt kind of read through those, and we'll kind of, we'll kind of read through those questions, and then Matt can give a brief kind of answer on what the staff has given, so that if there's anything on there that maybe didn't get clarified, I can take those back to the group that I met with and offer a clarification with staff on a different day. But with that, I won't take up too much time with anything else, but I would like to say those second graders and first graders are pretty interesting with their questions, so they do have great questions, and we had fun, I had fun with AP Hubert second graders on fielding those questions there too. So with that, I'll let Matt continue with those questions.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that, Mayor, and thank you for getting those to us in advance. We've got kind of the written response of what I'm reading out to you, Commissioners. If you want to hang on to these, these are questions that we hear, we hear from time to time as well, so hopefully this will prove to be of some use to you. I'll take up the first one, street racing in the city needs to be addressed. What are we doing to stop this? Can there be citizens watch to turn in the vehicles and their license number? Does it need to be recorded? So the answer, and there's a couple of these that are specifically related to the police department. Chief Pruitt's provided an update with a little bit more detail. Chief Pruitt's provided an update with a little bit more detail. Here's a, here's a paragraph summation of, of this particular comment and question. "Training has been provided during roll call to help reduce incidence of reckless driving. The current expectation is zero tolerance for these types of violations. As it relates to others coming forward with a complaint, there are certain criteria that need to be met in order for law enforcement action to be taken, such as a description of the vehicle, date, time, location of occurrence, information that fulfills the drag racing, reckless driving statutes, and most importantly, to be able to positively identify the driver of the vehicle at the time of the incident. The person would also have to be willing to testify against the person if a citation is issued based on the information they provide." Question number two, "Dusty trail. In any movement for tearing it down?" Answer, "The city has initiated the process for the receipt of the fire proceeds check that is issued by the insurance company. While that is being worked on, the next step is for the governing body consider, to consider a resolution determining the structure to be unsafe and/or dangerous, and the city anticipates being in a position to bring that resolution to the governing body at your November 5th meeting." Question three, "Old theater. Does the city have interest in running old films monthly?" We believe this is referring to the state theater, so our answer is related to the state theater. They're not currently plans to remodel it for programming, however, should the city move in that direction, it is certainly something that could be considered as we look at programming options. The current summer movie series in the park does not indicate a massive interest, but Parks and Recreation is always looking for creative ideas to improve programming opportunities. And so, just an update, we're sort of in between attempts to solicit request for proposal on the state theater. So, I think the approach the city commission's adopted at this point, specific to the theater, is to outsource the ownership of that building. Question four, Windsor Building. I think the general statements made about the look of the Windsor and it's going to waste. There is, and comments about the, comments as to maybe its current state, and, and the opinion of the person asking the question was that it needs to be getting rid of. Answer, "The city has worked with the Preservation Alliance, who is the owner of the Windsor Hotel, on property maintenance items due, to do with the structural integrity of the building, particularly on the west side. As this is a privately owned building, the city cannot direct the Preservation Alliance about its future plans, but we can share this community concern with them." Question five, "Grain trucks on Kansas Avenue. Are trucks and semi trucks allowed on Kansas Avenue in town? Do they have a special permit? What is the reason for them on Kansas Avenue? They can use the bypass instead of going through town." The answer, "The city has designated truck routes, and Kansas Avenue from the east city limits to Five Points is currently listed as a designated truck route. There are also provisions that allow for trucks to provide deliveries that are not located on a designated truck route." And we have provided some additional information, and Chief's memo covers that. Question number, number two six, "Car on trailer taco stand and other inoperable vehicles placed in the old cop shop parking lot on Chestnut and 7th." The, so, the answer, "We are currently working on tracking down the owners of the current vehicles, trailers at Chestnut and 7th. We anticipate, anticipate some of it being moved today, which I believe was yesterday, and some may end up getting towed. In short, it is unlawful to park personal property in a municipal parking lot for longer than 72 hours. As it relates to food trucks, the owner and operator are required to get consent from the property owner. Otherwise, a violation has occurred, and the vehicle can be towed." I guess that, there's additional information in that in Chief's memo as well. Then, question seven, regards to equipment at the Core Fitness Center. Comment that it needs to be, there's equipment needing to be replaced, wear and tear on seats and pads are cracking and ripping. So, equipment is replaced on an annual basis. The equipment's vinyl pads do crack and eventually tear open. When that occurs, the padding is removed and taken to a local upholstery company for repair and replacement. Typically, staff waits until there are several pieces to take over at once to help save on costs. The equipment is generally unusable for several days while the repair is being made and reinstalled. And if folks have concerns, ask to let core staff know when they see a ripped piece. Manholes in streets, question number eight. Is there plans to fix residential streets with this issue and not just the main roads in town? Can we request to have our streets looked at with major issues like this? So, street crews have installed approximately 12 manhole leveling rings this last spring, some on campus, Harding and Spruce, as a test to see how well they will hold up. So our biggest concern at this point is how they'll react to the freeze thaw conditions experienced in the winter months. So, once that monitoring has taken place, staff plans to measure each manhole and begin a manhole leveling project. Cost for each is around $120. And therefore, if the, the rings hold up well, the city will be able to schedule several improvements a year on city roads. It'll really largely be a function of, of time. Question number nine, is related to bridge work. Is there a KDOT plan that directs traffic for semi trucks or wind blade haulers? How will they handle that when the work on the East River Bridge repairs start? How long is construction going to be? It is staff's understanding that the east bridge work will not completely close, be closed to all traffic. There will be lanes open on one side of the bridge as KDOT crews or a contractor works on the opposite side of the bridge deck. The project is estimated to be bid in December and will start in spring of 2025, and has a six months' construction schedule. That is a KDOT project. Question, I think, 10, cemetery, has to do with the cemetery. Will the city look at installing fence along the north cemetery line now that there are residential houses and backyards along there? There was a fence, and it was removed several years ago to allow for additional parking at funerals and better accessibility to all areas around the city. It also helped improve the safety and ease of ground maintenance to not have a fence. There are no current plans to place a fence on the north edge of the cemetery property. There is a public right of way, walking trail, between the cemetery property and the residential lots. Question, whatever number we're on, is in relationship to, to empirical, the new advanced food processing. Are talks of them expanding for growth already true? And our answer is there have not been any formal plans submitted regarding an expansion. Question regarding green space for community parks, is there plan for green space at Hunter's Glen, Chapel Heights, or future residential developments? There's a good distance, more than a 10-minute walk to a community park from those areas. Hunter's Glen does not have a community park within, with, or green space. However, they do have a trail that runs along the south and west side of the development. Given its proximity to green space, the cemetery, when we negotiated the development of Hunter's Glen, we had them add to and expand as it related to being close to the Pioneer Trail, that that was the most appropriate use for the park, the parkland set aside or fee in lieu of ordinance. The site plan does include space for a community center, childcare, and small park within the development, but the exact details of that and which phase it will be included in are not known at this time. Chapel Heights also has a dedicated green space in the southwest corner of the development. This land set aside by a developer specifically for park space. Some developments, as I mentioned before, can pay a fee in lieu of dedicated park space. That is allowed within our subdivision regulations. Next question, a minimum maintenance plan. How is the process, and I think as it relates to minimum maintenance of residential structures or commercial structures in the downtown? How is the process going to implement a plan for areas like Main Street to have something like that in place? Other cities have this and been using it for years already. And the two specific forwarded to us were Manhattan and Derby. So we'll, we'll review those particular ordinances. And there are some aspects of that that are related to minimum maintenance of property, like code enforcement as well, like weeds and whatnot. So, we'll do some investigation. As it relates specifically to structures, if that was the origin of the person's question, we've got, you know, in our history, I'd say in recent history, last couple of decades, there have been two times the city commission has proposed, has been presented with the opportunity to pass a minimum maintenance ordinance, and both times, the commission elected not to approve a minimum, minimum maintenance ordinance. Common Spirit Hospital, at the hospital roundtable meetings that was convened by the Common Spirit CEO, there was mention of a public entities meeting or restarting that. In the past, the Chamber of Commerce led those meetings, and they were advised that those, well, they advised that they be led by either the city or the county. I will say the Chamber of Commerce did renew these meetings soon after that. They were held on a quarterly basis, and in fact, the third one since that meeting is this coming Thursday morning. So, they've been well attended, and you know, the value of them isn't necessarily having them, the value of them is, you know, do you, do you, do you talk about real stuff when you're there? So, the first two have been good. Question about the city's website, the current website is not very friendly to navigate. You won't get any argument from any of us. Any new items to come out for public knowledge need to coordinate with Telegram, also include with utility bill or something. The, you know, we weren't going to dictate what the Telegram reports on or not reports on. I, I would agree they need to, you know, I'd probably argue they need to report on everything that we put out for public consumption. The, we do have some other tools as well. So, yeah, full answer to that is our communications department is in the final stages of the website redesign project. Very shortly, that website will go live. We don't have a specific go-live date yet, but it is near. This will be promoted and introduced to residents with all the public information tools available to us. And of course, the Telegram's welcome to report on that as well. The new site has, does have news widgets on the main page where departments can post consistent updates. And we also have, of course, the My GCKS tool and our social media outlets as well. We do send stuff out on occasion through utility billing inserts. However, I, I think we have a sense that our, those other tools, kind of the text alerts and the social media, are probably our most effective ways of, of giving people updates. Downtown, question regarding downtown, is there an opportunity to allow signs of new shopping developments to say something about more shopping downtown, digital signs or just metal signs to advocate for smaller mom and pop shops? We have to be mindful of the current zoning regulations and their, their, the type of signage throughout the city, but that being said, the, the Garden City down, down plan does have a few action items related to improved signage downtown and, and to include gateway signage and better wayfinding signage. In our history, we have done wayfinding signs for the downtown throughout the community, and those, those have been up in the, in the east side of town. They may not be up anymore, they may have been taken out because they were so faded. They were, weren't the city's maintenance responsibility, but the, those could easily be refreshed. And so we'll look into the number, location, and costs per sign of those that were already once approved. Regarding the city's TV channel, what if I don't have Cox? What channel do I turn to? Well, Cox, cable channel eight is provided through the Cox franchise, so they, they're the proprietors of that business. It's their, it's, it's their service that they provide through our, through our franchise agreement with them, so it's not available to other providers. City commission meetings and the content on that channel, however, can all be viewed on our city's YouTube channel. And if folks would just search City of Garden City, Kansas on YouTube, they'll, they'll find that content. Final question, alleys. Wires on ground, not sure what they are, specifically described, they specifically gave an address behind Kingsbury and Tweed Center and Heinemann Street. I would say this is all over town, though, so this is a universal answer. We are aware of the issue. We are in direct communication frequently with cable and fiber providers, those have been around for a while, and those that are new to the game, to get these service lines buried to the proper depth as defined in the franchise agreements they have with the City of Garden City.
I appreciate the answers from staff as far as, I know it was a, a lot of questions, but I appreciate those getting back with, with these and answering as best I can.
You're welcome.
So Matt, thank you for reading that. Would also like to just state that if any of the information given wasn't what they were looking for, I'll be sure to kind of get back with them, and then I can directly email one of you, each of you, that response and clarification, so. But thank you, commissioners, for the reports. As that concludes the reports, we'll go ahead and go into executive session for item 13, or I'm sorry.
12I.
12I.
How long, Jennifer, do you think for this one? 20?
Yeah, let's go 20. I think we can do that.
All right, and this one would just be Jennifer and I joining the commission.
Okay, I hear motion for that.
Mayor, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 4319P2, pertaining to consultation with attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationships, specifically regarding pending litigation with the city attorney, Jennifer Cunningham, and city manager, Alan, beginning at 3:07, lasting for 20 minutes, ending at 3:27.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
All right, thank you, and we can shut down the, the broadcast.